This meeting of the Gazzan City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Reverend Willie Simmons to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we come before you with thanksgiving. We thank you, Lord, for your hands being upon our great city. We thank you for your blessings being upon our mayor and the council and those that assist and serve the people of this great city. Your word says that if any man lacked wisdom, then let him ask. We're asking you for wisdom to conduct the business of this city today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the City Council meeting.
Some move.
Second. On August the 20th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of August the 16th through the 22nd.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
I'd like to ask Judy Atkins and all those that are with her, I could call out most of names, if y'all would all come up, please.
Our sixteen-month-old grandson was diagnosed with leukemia and he is five now and has been cancer-free seventeen months.
I'm Betty Phillips and my granddaughter Bailey Phillips has been fighting, battling a brain tumor for seven years. She's still on treatment, still fighting till we find the cure for childhood cancer.
Since whereas every year thousands of children across America are diagnosed with cancer and often life-threatening illness, it remains the leading cause of death by disease for children under age of fifteen. The causes of pediatric cancer are still largely unknown and though new discoveries are resulting in new treatments, the heartbreaking disease continues to scar families and communities in ways that may never fully heal. Whereas although work continues in the fight to understand, treat, and control childhood cancer with researchers around the world pioneering new therapies and exploring the root causes of the disease, driving progress that could reveal cures or improve outcomes for patients, help still does not come soon enough for many of our sons and daughters and too many families suffer pain and devastating loss. We wish to remember the young lives taken too soon and to stand with the families facing childhood cancer today. We pay tribute to the families, friends, professionals, and communities who lend their strength to children fighting pediatric cancer and hope their courage and commitment will continue to move us toward new cures, healthier outcomes, and brighter future for America's youth. Therefore, I sure am getting mayor of the City of Gazzan and the City Council of the City of Gazzan, joining hereby proclaiming September 2013 is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Gazzan and encourage everyone to join in reaffirming our commitment to fighting this terrible disease.
Children's cancer awareness is so important to all of us because children's cancer is the most underfunded research of any of the cancers. The children get less than two percent of the money that comes out of the federal government for children's cancer research. Our children can't all speak for themselves, so we're here to speak for them and for Ms. Bailey, who is a wonderful spokesman, as we all know, and we're here to thank you, all of you, for this proclamation and how much it means to us. We, all of the children's cancers have different color ribbons because all of our children are different, but we have one ribbon that represents all of our children and that's the gold ribbon because our children are our future and our children are all golden. So we really appreciate what you're doing and thank you so much and my granddaughter has stage four neuroblastoma, which is not curable. Thank you very much.
Unfinished business has an ordinance amending city code sections 118 to 129 to designate the east side of State Street from Eleventh Street to the dead end as a no parking zone. The ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Some move.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance rezoning property located on Wall Street between Forest Avenue and Norris Avenue on District Six, in District Six from B4, Design Review District to B2, General Business District. The planning department initiated this request to make the zoning more applicable to the properties. Planning Commission unanimously recommended the council approve the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, it's okay today, I'd like to suspend the rule so we can go ahead and vote on this today and get this over with.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at the first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located at 5204 Airport Road in District Six from I-1 Light Industry District to R-1 One Family Residential District. Nancy Graham requests the rezoning for the purpose of marketing the property for residential use. There is a residence on the property and it has never been used for any other purpose. Planning Commission unanimously recommended the council approve the rezoning. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, I would like to go ahead and suspend the rules on this one also today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at the first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll make a move to adopt, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution appointing members to the Gazzan Cultural Arts Foundation. This confirms the mayor's reappointment of Kay Moore, Wilbur Masters, and Nada Mateo for terms expiring January the first, 2015. It also confirms mayor's appointments of Holly Ostendorf, Reverend Debrick Hauser, and Tony Reddick for terms expiring January the first, 2016. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, are there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items. The first one is a resolution awarding bid number 3243 to James Watson's Sons for the installation of their aluminum structural plate on Springfield Avenue. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today.
Right.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, this is the second part of our bridge replacement on Springfield Avenue, Chapman. We've done the structural part, this is awarding the bid to a contractor so that we can move forward with replacing the bridge on Springfield.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The other item, Mr. President, is a resolution authorizing agreement with collective data for software for the fleet department. I would like to ask unanimous consent to consider this resolution today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Is there any discussion?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item to consider today. It's a resolution approving an amended date for tax abatement for a Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company. I ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is again in connection with the expansion of Goodyear's manufacturing facility located, you know, here on Meakin Boulevard. This is actually the fourth expansion. There've been three prior extensions and of course this one requires council approval.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. Ask for unanimous consent, please. It's a resolution authorizing satisfaction of nuisance abatement lien at 2113 Hill Avenue in District Six.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll make a motion to approve, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is where we're selling a piece of property we've been cutting. We're just trying to get it off our cutting list and give the property to somebody else that the money is in the vault on this piece of property.
Any other new business?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other? Department, or force, committee, boards, are there any? Citizens request Pastor Willie Simmons, CDP 2000 banquet and upcoming events. Please, do you know the city? State your name and address, whether the City Clerk...
My name's Willie Simmons. I'm a pastor in New Liberty, Tappan Amity Place, Executive Director of Community Development Project 2000 there at 924 East Broad. The, I want to announce two, three events that would, that would, that would be taking place this weekend and one of them would be the Open House of the Community Development Project 2000. It's a dedication of Open House, the CDP 2000 Empowerment Center, where we help to transition men and women that are coming out of incarcerated or broken situations. We also help to meet the immediate needs like food, shelter, clothing, and also connect them back, connect them back into society by helping them contact other agencies that may have specialties that they may need. So that will be August the 30th, which will be this Friday from 10 to 1:00 at 9:30 East Broad there at our new empowerment center. So please come out and we're inviting the mayor, the council to come out. We're also having our Community Development Project 2000 fundraising banquet on, at Saturday, August the 31st at 6:00 PM there at New Liberty Tappan Amity Place Fellowship Hall. So we'd like for you all to come out and help us raise some funds, meet some of the youth that have been through our summer camps and weekend camps and different things that we have there to help them. The other event will be on Labor Day and this will be sponsored by the Men of Gazzan. There have been about 120 men meeting every quarter for prayer and breakfast, praying for our city, praying for our mayor, praying for our councilmen. But they're going to sponsor an event for the, for the families of the community. Everybody can't go out of town, everybody can't go to Florida. Some people are here and they never get to go anywhere, so we're going to be there at the East Broad Campus of Gazzan State from 10:00 to 3:00, from 10:00 to 3:00. Inviting you to come out, just want you to come out and support if you're in town. We would really appreciate it and we appreciate all that you do in this city, appreciate all you do for the families of this city. We're asking that we can all just work together, city, business, and churches, come together and we can do a great job, I think, stop so many from falling through the cracks. God bless you.
Pastor Simmons?
Yes, sir.
What building on Gazzan State Campus?
It would be there on the, on the lawn, right down the...
Up on the front there, East Broad?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, right there on East Broad.
Is the empowerment program that you're putting on, is that new?
Well, we have been transitioning men from incarcerated situations, from different prisons or from jail. We've been doing that, but we haven't had a home place that we could do it. We haven't had a place where they could, where we could really help them as far as giving them a place to stay in the training so that within six months they're able to go back into society.
Are you kind of tracking it, is it working out?
It's working great. We've got four young men that we brought in from different limestone ones from St. Clair, some from Edouard County that we helped and they're working in school, getting married and everything else, doing great. We just, you know, you can't, you have to isolate and then take it one or two at a time, but it's just a mentoring program.
I think it's one of the most important things you're empowered to do, but I think it's growing in the fatherhood program that we've been pushing all this time.
Yes, sir.
That's where to me it would start and I'm glad, I'm glad to see you doing it.
Yes, sir, it does. We also, you know, I want to emphasize the need to be there for the, for the children too in the non-supervised times. The summer camps, the weekend camps, the, those things really helping mentor and going to school. If we can touch them before they get to that point, it's good to help once they get there, but if we can touch them before they get there, that's the, that's the greatest thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. One of the things, Mr. President, that he did mention was that he, for years, has been driving a prison ministry in partnership with a number of other churches that, you know, has served to really support and augment a lot of the other things.
He has a lot of good and has for a long time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start today?
Yes, sir, thank you. By the way, too, Willie is, his group are going to be getting a new parking lot here pretty soon. It's sort of been a long process, but we're going to give you some space over there on a couple lots, I think, that he's given us and we're going to take care of it for him, which will help that whole area right there. He's been real patient.
Yes.
We had some legal hurdles to overcome on description, but we finally got that worked out. I just wanted to say a couple things that happened upstairs. Fred Sinkton was here with the Airport Authority, he's the chairman and a lot of good news out there. In the last few months, we've been able to secure a special forces supply unit battalion and, you know, formerly the Air National Guard Company was in those buildings and they moved out and the battalion is about four or five companies, several hundred guys and they'll be training out there off and on all the time, they already have been, they'll be parachuting, dropping jeeps with parachutes, buying gas, just all kinds of things and staying in our motels and eating, so we're proud to have them. They're also building a new building for something they need as well as they would be remodeling all of our existing buildings. I think they're about to have some companies come in and do that, so that's going to be great for the airport. In the last several months, we've had a credit card 24-hour serve yourself gas pump put in where people can fly in and fly out and buy the gas and nobody's there. If it's jets, they have a 24-hour call number, we have someone who will go out and fill up the jets. And a lot of people don't know, we probably got the best airport in northeast central Alabama. We have a sixty, 6,800-foot runway, we have an instrument landing system that was put in a couple years ago for a few million bucks. We got a grant, $2.4 million to repave and stripe a runway and, you know, we just had a lot of, a lot of events going on and a lot of good things happening out there and so we're hoping we can get recognized a little more. We're working on a program too with Gazzan City High School and Gazzan State on aircraft maintenance, which maybe we can attract some of that industry in here as well. So it's a lot of, a lot of good news at the airport, they doing a great job out there.
Thank you, Mr. President, I am. The, the one thing that I really want to mention today is parent-teacher organizations and the support that our schools deserve from our communities and our families. In particular, I will say Litchfield Middle School and we've been involved with that school for quite some time now and the meeting that we had last week, a week before, gave us information that Litchfield has improved tremendously, one of the most improved schools in Alabama in math and reading. The thing that we have found is that we need to support Litchfield Middle School and the parent-teacher organization that is being revitalized now, as we speak, needs the community support. So I'm encouraging everybody who has an interest in the City of Gazzan, the East Gazzan, you have kids, you don't have to have kids in school to show an interest in what's going on. Showing interest and turnout for the parent-teacher organization meetings that Principal Cook is going to be rescheduling so that the school can get our support. I'm asking, I'm asking for that so that we don't let our children fall through the crack there at Litchfield. In addition to that, you know, we will also say National Children's Cancer Awareness Week is a great thing. It's just another one of those areas where we must come to the rescue, we must come to the rescue of our children in any and all shape, form, and fashions to make sure that we can do everything that they can to enhance their life, you know, and to make sure that they grow up, as Pastor Simmons said, go grow up to be productive citizens in our, in our city, in our state, in our country. So I encourage everybody to do everything you can, to do everything, I mean, to promote the wellness of our children in any way that you can. And the last thing I'll say is Labor Day is coming up. I hope everybody have a safe holiday, enjoy yourselves, be careful, and be here to come to council meeting next week. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple quick announcements. Councilman Avery is not here today, obviously, but he did ask that I, I think he's attending the, the events in DC, in Washington, DC, leading up to tomorrow's 50th anniversary of the March on Washington. But he did ask me to announce that CNN will be rebroadcasting, We Were There, and I think that's the, that's the documentary where he was, his, him and two other young men hitchhiking to Washington, DC was, was highlighted. And it'll be rebroadcast on Saturday at 2:00 PM and 9:00 PM Central Time and on Sunday at 8:00 PM. So, so those who did not get an opportunity to see that will have an opportunity to see that, see that again on Saturday, 2:00 PM, 9:00 PM, and Sunday at 8:00 PM. The last thing I'd like to, like to mention is that the groundbreaking ceremony for the River Trace development will take place on, on tomorrow at, is it 10:30 PM?
10 o'clock.
10 AM? 10 AM. It will take, take place on tomorrow at, at 10 AM and I'm very excited about that and so again, we are excited about the progress that's going to happen as it relates to that development. That's it.
Mayor.
I'd just like to thank the people who came this morning and make us aware of childhood cancer. You know, we normally assume the older, older people get cancer, but our children get cancer too and we probably don't pay enough attention to that and they don't get the support that we should, so appreciate those people coming this morning and making us aware of that and keeping it on our minds. I would like to say a word about Reverend Simmons. He does a fantastic job with these programs over there. We support you 100% and in fact, get with our city clerk and let's start a list, see if we can't help you a little bit financially with your banquet and stuff coming out. I know I can, I'm going to, so just appreciate you for what we, we say. That's thanks for reminding everybody tonight, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, we'll have our District Six meeting once again at Banks Park Activity Center. Y'all come out and the police department will be there tonight, some of my from police department will be there to answer questions. That's at 5:30 at Banks Park tonight. I also want to let everybody know that I know we're getting behind again on our grass cutting. Maybe you know how many yards, how many grasses we've cut, grass yards we've cut this week? You got any idea?
I can tell you one four-day stretch, we got about 307 or something. We'll go for a couple weeks, then we pull off and do some other jobs we have to do and then we'll go back into the business area again. and then we'll go back into the woods again, but I think considering the rain, it's going pretty good.
It is and just, just bear with us, we will get all these lots cut and if you need your mosquito spray, and I've had a bunch of calls about mosquito spraying, you have to call this year at 256-549-45, I say 549-4703. That's the Public Works Department. If you'll call that number right there and they'll be glad to come out and spray you for mosquitoes. That's all I've got. Mayor?
Comment, or I will. We don't just spray a regular route anymore. The Environmental Protection Agency outlawed that, so only way we can come out and spray an area is if we get calls to go spray it, then we will, but we don't have a regular route anymore.
And that number once again is 256-549-4703 and just tell them what you need and the streets are needing sprayed and they'll be glad to come out and spray it for you. That's all I got, yeah.
Yeah. I want to agree with Sherman, what he was talking about the airport. That's one of the biggest assets we got, riverfront, airport. To me, that's the biggie. And also Fred Sington, really now, he has done a great job out there. Of course, he got a good staff to back him up and he's got a good board, so come get that combination together and they've done a splendid job. And I want to thank Debrick for remembering that tomorrow is the 50th anniversary of the March and Martin Luther King. That was kind of overshadowed about the last three or four days with Brother Avery on every front page that we had. I didn't have a chance to miss Robert this morning because I'm sure he's going to be in the paper today. Welcome back, Robert, whenever you get back. That's all.
Yeah. I had a daughter when she was 18, had cancer and there's nothing I don't guess is scarier to a parent than the word cancer when it applies to your child. She's 57 years old today and the good Lord was just with us and, but I really do think that we need to be just what those people were talking about today. There's nothing more valuable to a parent than your child and when that word cancer gets involved in it, it is devastating, I tell you, but the good Lord is with us. We got to it early enough and she's doing fine today. If there's nothing else?
Mr. President, you might want to announce the garbage pickup for next week so everybody will know. Can me do it for you?
Yeah, do it for me because I ain't get anything on it.
Monday's pickup will be Tuesday. Tuesday's pickup will be Wednesday. Thursday and Friday's schedule will be the same, just be one day back this week for people who gets it on Monday and Tuesday. Monday's garbage will be picked up Tuesday. Tuesday's garbage will be picked up Wednesday. Thursday and Friday will be regular schedule.
And if you miss it from this announcement, just look in the Gaston Times.
Andy, what happened?
He will absolutely handle it. He's had all that other, he can handle that.
Andy, we really do appreciate you.
I don't. I mean, I just wanted the record clear on that one, Andy. Spell it right.
You can put his phone number if you want to. He's in the book, too.
Kind or gentler said that.
Ben, you shouldn't mess with people that buy their ink by the barrel. They will get you.
Oh, man, I take it Saturday and Sunday.
If there's nothing else?
Adjourned.
This meeting is adjourned.